Good evening and welcome to the May 29, 2012 meeting of the Lake Forest Zoning Board of Appeals. The board is here tonight to work together with all of you, property owners, neighbors, and architects, to continue the tradition that allows community members to work together to preserve the qualities and the unique character that make Lake Forest a special community. We recognize the personal importance of each petitioner's request. Our goal is to respect the requests of the owner while balancing the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the zoning board of appeals, the board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The city of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television. Speaking on behalf of the entire board and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the larger community. I would now ask the board members, beginning with Mr. Culbertson, please introduce themselves and their wards.
Lloyd Culbertson, fourth ward.
Sam Sicorelli, third ward.
Jay Kennedy, fourth ward.
Richard Kristoff, fourth ward.
Rosemary Care, second ward. And will members of city staff please introduce themselves?
Megan O'Neal.
Kathy Sernier.
Thank you. Our first piece of business is approval of the minutes of the February 27, 2012 zoning board of appeals minutes. And the second item will be the approval of the April 23, 2012 zoning board of appeals meeting. So regarding the February 27, 2012 minutes, do any board members have any comments to Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as distributed?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you. Then the minutes of the February 27 zoning board of appeals meeting are adopted. And now on the April 23, 2012 meeting minutes, are there any comments from board members on those minutes? Would one of you gentlemen care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So the zoning board of appeals minutes from the April 23, 2012 meeting have now been adopted as well. Now we will proceed to a new petition, which is a consideration of a request for variance from the lot in depth setback requirements for an addition to an existing structure at 1296 North Green Bay Road. Owners are Jess and Katie Belcher and representative is Austin Dupree, architect. First, I do want to ask if any of the board members have any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts regarding this matter?
None.
None.
Okay. And are there members in the audience who will be testifying this evening? Okay. Okay. Would you please each step forward and identify yourselves and then I'm going to ask you to be sworn in.
Is that speaking in the microphone?
That'd be great, thank you.
My name's Austin Dupree.
Craig Bergman.
Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you are about to give is true and correct to your best knowledge? Thank you. Now we have the presentation by the petitioner. Mr. Dupree, will you be making the presentation?
Yes, we'll be making a joint presentation. This is Craig Bergman, the landscape architect for the project. Just make sure this is operating here. Present up here so I can move the slides forward. My name's Austin Dupree. I was hired by the Belchers to look at an addition to this house you see on the screen, which was originally designed by Howard Van Dorn Shaw. It's in the historic district, the Green Bay Historic District, built in 1898 and has had substantial renovations done to the house over time, one of which probably the most impactful was that this house originally sat on a very large parcel of land on a farm and subsequently subdivided. And the current setbacks and the reason we're here before you tonight are very restrictive on the property. Since we have 10 minutes, I'll be brief and go through the whole presentation and if you have questions, feel free. This is an original image of the house when it was built, 1296 Green Bay Road. This is a current image of the way the house sits on the lot now. One of the later additions was this two-car garage, which you see before you. From the rear facade, reminiscent of the earlier facade, some of the additions include this rear screen porch and this rear glass conservatory, as well as the third floor Again, another view of the rear facade. Some of the adjacent houses, this is actually another Howard Van Dorn Shaw that was built by the same owner as the broadly was built as a playhouse for their daughter and now is a standalone single-family residence. Another adjoining property built after 1296 Green Bay Road. And another house across the street. When you look at the overall property here, there's a large access easement in the form of a private drive that takes up a little over 8,000 square feet of the property. And also because this is a lot in depth, all of the setbacks are 50 feet from side, front, and rear, which essentially makes this an unbuildable lot. When you take into account the 50-foot setbacks in all directions, there is no allowable building footprint. So again, the existing home footprint here, the Belchers have hired us to look at putting a screen porch at the first floor and the second floor of the home. Unconditioned screen porches, which are in keeping with Howard Van Dorn Shaw's current or historical designs in the neighborhood. And you can see that addition here in the roof plan. It's approximately 20 by 20-foot addition on the first floor, approximately 19 feet away from this corner of the property line. At the second floor, the screen porch sits directly adjacent and above this first floor proposed porch. Again, in floor plan, this is the existing screen porch off the east side of the house and the proposed screen porch off of the family room at the west side of the house. In elevation, existing elevation here, proposed elevation below with the screen porch that will mimic some of the proportions and details found at the rest of the house. And the second floor porch here that you'll see up above the proposed first floor porch. Other elevations, the same porch, proposed porch here, and second floor porch above and existing conditions you'll see above. This is the existing two-car garage, existing screen porch, and another elevation of the existing screen porch that you saw in the photographs. This is an image showing existing conditions at the rear facade of the home and then the proposed porch at the first floor and second floor. And I think what's really important to note about this project and this house in general is it is an historic home and we really took a broad look at the structure and tried to develop a plan that was not only sensitive to the surrounding neighbors, we have had all the neighbors over to the house, they've reviewed the plans and really participated in the planning process. And also trying to create an addition that would develop a little bit more balance and symmetry to the home. A large part of this project actually is landscape improvements. I want to have Craig Bergman present the landscape.
Thank you, Austin. And while he was speaking, our owners came in. These are the Belchers, Jess and Kate. Letting you know that when Austin says that the landscape element is an important part, I think there was a real insensitivity in the subdivision of the parcel for the old house, which is unfortunate that I think that's why there's such a jig-jog of a property line and that kind of thing. The former owner, before the Belchers put in a pool, were actually suggesting to remove it, gain backyard space back. The Belchers have children, they'd love to have a room in the yard for kids to play. And the screen porch that's here is so small enough, the formal end of the house, we're trying to get some outdoor screen porch space at the first floor level where the kitchen and the family room is because, as you know, you know, when a house was built at the turn of the century, people lived in homes very differently than what we live in today. The new plan also proposes a rerouting of the drive entry or the property entry driveway. As Austin had said before, there's a real circuitous drive that's shared by three different homes. And right now, the drive entry cuts right through here and the first thing one sees is not a historic home but a two-car garage. So what we'd like to do is we'd like to cut through here where there was actually an infill of Norway spruce by the previous owner and all of a sudden one can see the front door, park here, and then have the garage feel subordinate to the main house as garages really should be. And then all of the Norway spruce that are here right now get distributed to diffuse the driveway, which is not being diffused as well right now to the north neighbor. And then the, there's a juncture of three driveways right here, one to the north, one to the west neighbor, and then coming into the Belcher property. So by relocating the Belcher entry to their property off the long length of the shared road, it actually reduces any kind of a hazard or congestion that might happen when somebody's going to work and the trash truck is back there or whatever. There's a garden entry that one walks through from the motor court to the front door. We've maintained quite a large green space. There's a garden room right here that has a green space around it that looks quite disproportionate to the scale of the house. So what Austin's firm has done is developed more of an upper courtyard feel for the terrace level and then with some steps down to a lawn level, landing at the base of the stairs and a little reflecting pool here. The plant materials along the edge, again, historically there have been people just plopping plants into the landscape without much sensitivity and we're trying to get rid of the hedges of blue spruce and things like that so we can actually make sense to the home in context to this kind of wooded clearing that they own. Here's that long shared driveway. And where this car is actually parked would be where cars would come in. That's actually a parking bay right now. But at present, you enter all the way over here. You can see how one just focuses right on the garage door and we're standing in the north neighbor's driveway right here and the west neighbor comes into this juncture right here. We have spoken to both the city and to HBC and they're all in favor of the driveway reconfiguration. They think it'd be a nice way of honoring the old house. These spruce are along the north-south road and they're looking at the side, the east side of the home right here. And what we're proposing to do is to break through these spruce. And as you can see, there are no major trees in the way. This big white oak here, the disturbance of the planting of the spruce underneath them was already done years ago and it survived, but our drive entry access is down here. Just to kind of give you contextual information, this is where the drive entry would come and the cars would park here. In the rear, we did this sketch just to show folks just kind of the finished massing of the house. This is a flat portion of the family room right now. This roof is flat. It's merely just putting a sleeping porch on top. And then this screen porch is at the same level as this porch and the conservatory room right here, which exist. It's really hard with the graphics that you see here, but the front entry, here's the motor court edge, I'm sure you have this in your packet, but this is what I've shown you already. And in the rear with this odd property line across the back, by taking out the swimming pool, which fills this entire space right here, we actually are creating a much greener space. This neighbor to the south has a really beautiful open lawn and there will be quite a bit of continuity when looking from this terrace across the evergreen planting that's shielding the driveway to actually see open lands beyond the neighbor's property. So we're actually reopening a vista that has been closed for probably 25 years. All of the trees that you see in here, the red X's demarcate removals and the green triangles demarcate transplantation. And we went through this with the city forester and they're in full agreement of everything that we're proposing. And a lot of the removals are because of Norway maple growing into old hedgerows or, like I said, blue spruce growing with buckthorn. You know, the blue spruce have no lower branches anymore, they just look like telephone poles with Christmas trees on top. So that's where we're, that's why you see so much red demarcation in here. So that concludes the landscape part. Really what Austin is talking about for the zoning change, in fact, is for the structure. But we wanted you to realize that we're not just adding onto a home, we're actually trying to revitalize the whole property. You know, the Belchers are on stage three of working on this home and this is their final hope with the renovation of the house. Okay?
Okay.
So, do anybody have any questions?
Just one more piece of background and history. We've been working with the city over the last three months on this project and we've met with the HBC twice and we received unanimous approval to move forward. There was a bulk relief that was sought by the HBC and they granted bulk relief for the property just because of its unique characteristics. Feel free to ask any questions.
Well, thank you both. At this time, we'll have identification of the issues by the staff and then we will have questions.
Thank you, Chairman Care. I really don't have that much more to say. Just as was mentioned, this lot was part of a larger property and as the area was subdivided off, this lot was left surrounded by other residential lots. Therefore, under our current zoning definitions, this is considered a lot in depth and has more restrictive setback requirements than a typical lot in the R4 zoning district. The home was even built before adoption of a zoning code in this case, let alone the provision for the lot in depth requirements. The lot has several unique characteristics that, based on the findings in the staff report, warrant a consideration of the zoning variance, given the lot configurations, the size, the over 8,000 square feet of access easements that is located on the property, the historic home. Those all relate to the standards for granting zoning variances. The proposed additions are also screen porches. They are less heavy than a fully enclosed addition. The Historic Preservation Commission, as was mentioned by the petitioner, did review the project. They granted a certificate of appropriateness for a building scale variance as well as the design of the addition and the landscape plan. So today we're looking for, or recommending approval from the zoning board for the setback variance, which is an 18-foot setback from the property line where in this case a 50-foot setback is required. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Are there any questions or requests for clarification, any from the board members for either petitioner or staff?
I just have a couple. This question's for staff. If you impose the 50-foot setbacks on this lot, you couldn't build anything on this property, is that correct?
The, after application of the setback requirements, there is a small sliver of buildable area. It is very small.
It's just a sliver. What would the R4 setbacks be?
For a standard lot in the R4 district, there is a side yard setback requirement of 20 feet and 50 feet from the front and rear. Because this is a lot in depth, there's a 50-foot setback requirement from all property lines and access easements.
You'd still have a very skinny parcel you could build off. Am I correct in understanding that we do not, or this board does not consider any of the design aspects of this project, landscaping, building materials, fences, anything like that? We're simply deciding on the setback issues and the construction?
Right. The zoning board certainly can take into consideration the character of the proposed addition, the heights, the massing, the location on the property. But the details of wood trim and design has been reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. So your review would be more, you know, is this an appropriate variance request given the design of the project?
And that's true of landscaping as well?
The landscaping certainly can be part of your discussion.
Did I read correctly that there is a fence being proposed for the rear of the yard? Taking down a chain link and putting up a stockade fence?
As you know, the pool code requires a fence. Because the neighbor to the south has virtually no landscape on their side of the fence and the Belcher house is up about 42, 46 inches above grade, one can see right through the fence and watch the vehicle traffic from the driveway when you're at the pool. So what we're doing is we're planting on the Belcher side to diffuse the fence but also maintaining a fence enclosure that happens to be stockade.
Right. And it's black? Did I read that, that it's a black fence?
No, what you read was there's a black aluminum fence that goes through the Norway spruce grove, which is on the east side. It's there now. Right. And that's what you drive along when you're on that easement.
I'm a little confused. Is the pool staying or coming out or is that indeterminate?
The pool's coming out and there's a reflecting pond going in, but because of the size of the pond, it's 18 inches deep, they require a fence like a swimming pool.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Care.
I have no questions for staff or the petitioner.
I have no questions either.
I have no questions either for staff or petitioner.
I would only add to Megan's comments that I think it is within our purview to consider how any changes impact the neighborhood, the specific neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood. We are now open for any public testimony on the issue. Would any board members care to ask the petitioner or staff any questions? Your second chance?
I'll just ask staff. What was your position on the fence? We're going from a black chain link to a stockade fence. Does staff have an opinion on that?
The Historic Preservation Commission actually reviewed the fence detailing, the landscaping, and the design of the addition and voted unanimously to approve it.
Well, I'd say at this time, if I see no other questions, would someone care to make a motion?
Well, maybe we could discuss it amongst ourselves.
Okay.
For a moment. If you think that's appropriate.
That's fine. Open up to any questions or comments from board members regarding the petition.
Okay.
Not really. I think the project has been properly vetted through the HBC and I didn't find anything disagreeable with the design elements or, the only thing I questioned was the fence. I see the reason for a fence. And as long as HBC thinks it's tasteful and appropriate, won't impact the neighborhood dramatically, then I'll endorse this project.
I think the addition of that screen porch is a nice addition. It makes it, it balances the house. I think the landscape plan is very well done and restores a nice view to the house that currently isn't there.
Yeah, it appears to me a very rational plan and well thought out. I can't see it creating any type of issues for anybody, so it seems to be a good plan to me.
I feel the same way. I think in view of the fact that you're a lot in depth, it's impossible to do anything with those types of dimensions since the zoning code has been amended. So your requests, I think, are reasonable and I think, Will, I agree with Jay, I think they're going to be an improvement to the home. I think it's a good job. Thank you.
Any additional comments from staff? Would the petitioner care to make any comments? Now, may I ask then, is there a motion?
I move that we recommend approval to the city council of the requested variance to allow the new additions at 1296 North Green Bay Road, so long as they are no closer than 18 and 1/2 feet to the west property line as shown on the site plan.
I'll second that motion.
Shall we bring it to a vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you very much for spending the three months doing your due diligence before appearing before the board. We appreciate it.
Congratulations. Thank you for being a board member. We all need you.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, at this time, if there are any other members of the audience, members of the public who would care to address the zoning board, please let us know. Not seeing any other members of the public willing to address at this time, I would ask staff if there are any other comments, any additional information you'd like to Then I would like to hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Megan O'Neal's trying to get you to the train.